Welcome, good evening everybody. Yeah, I'm motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Action items out of closed session April 23rd and May 7th. Closed session ends. Anybody got anything in there they wish to amend? If not, any motion to approve as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Betsy please.
Yes, Brewer.
Yes.
Duryraj.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Yuravich.
Yes.
Kopp.
Yes. Communications 4-1. This is where anybody gets to bring something that's on the agenda in front of the school board. And if you could, keep it five minutes and just state your name and couple. Okay, very good.
Hi, I'm Carrie Cath. I'm the president of the BCA. I am speaking in an address to the Board Policy 5-2-5-0 on personnel professional leaves of absences. One of the changes that is being proposed is that under the second paragraph, asked conditions for paid sick leave as the Board Superintendent deem necessary, says one to be a physician licensed in Illinois. I was wondering if we could change it from a physician's to a licensed medical practitioner and possibly strike the word Illinois? Because I do know that some of our staff do have to travel outside of the state, specifically in Missouri, St. Louis area, for some specialists. So, that's my only concern.
And that's on for 8-2 student handbook changes?
No, it's under the policies that are being proposed tonight. It's, hold on a second.
Oh, 5-10?
Yeah.
Second reading of HR policy?
Yeah. So it'd be 5-2-5-0. Thank you.
Alright, anything else? Thank you, Carrie. Anybody else got anything they want to address with the school board on an agenda topic? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda items 5-1 to, how many we got? Let's see, 5-12? They got any of them they wish to pull?
Well, that would be it, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
5-2-50. We gonna pull them all or just the one?
You know, it's up to-
Or the whole item?
It would probably be the whole item. We can just fall back up.
Pull 5-10, we'll deal with it later. Do I have a motion then? 5-9 to 5-11, 5-12. Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Betsy please.
Yes, Duryraj.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Yuravich.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
And Kopp.
Yes. Moving on to personnel consent. We've got 6-1 to 6-38, I believe. If they wish to pull any of them.
6-16.
6-16.
Any others? Hearing none, then I need a motion to approve 6-1 to 6-15, 6-17 to 6-38 as presented. Thank you. Have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Betsy please.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Yuravich.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Duryraj.
Yes.
And Kopp.
Yes. 16, we have a new high school principal.
We do, would you like a few words I can say here?
Absolutely, you want to introduce?
I do, this is Mr. Doug Szysinski. So Doug, if you could stand just for a moment? And 25 jumping, no, I'm just kidding. Well, yeah, no, I'd like to-
I was a Marine, sir.
No, I know. I know you were. We're very pleased to have Doug here this evening. Doug is going to be our new principal at the high school. He actually spent a great deal of time in Florida with his family, which I questioned, you know, coming from Florida to Illinois. But no, Doug is actually an Illinoisan. Has an extensive family here. And he's currently, he's as an assistant principal with Springfield. And so now, after spending the time in Florida for four years, he was a principal in an extremely large high school, I believe 4,000 students.
About 4,300 when I left.
4,300. And, you know, once you start looking at candidates and screening and look at their background, you start nowadays, it's Google searches and looking at everything else. And I believe it was the Orange-
Was that an Orange?
West Orange, I believe, is where he was at. And they did a beautiful article. And I would encourage you to look it up. And it talked about Doug's ability to build relationships and work with students and work with staff. Extensive knowledge in regards to technology, technology integration in the classroom. And it just went on and on. And this is as he was leaving, it was really nice to read the article that they had written about you. If I'd had that article, I'd certainly have it hanging on the wall. But we're very fortunate to have Doug. I know that he has expressed how truly excited he is to have him and his family back in Illinois. And to be, you know, when we talked with Doug, all he talked about was this being his dream job. This is his dream job. And just couldn't wait to get started. This is the first step in that, well, actually probably the second, third step of process. Doug's gonna go over to the high school and certainly meet all of the staff and talk with them as well. But we're extremely happy to have you on board and have your family here as well, Doug. And I see that you have your wife and your children here. So I'd like to welcome you as well. And I could go on and on, but nobody wants to hear me go on and on. Right, Jamie? Is there anything you'd like to say?
I just want to take the opportunity to thank the school board and Dr. Wood. You know, three out of my five children are here. Busy life and shout out to my wife who finished her master's degree today. I'm just, I'm so excited about the opportunity to get back in the helm of school and the principal for six years, three at a middle school, three at a high school. And there is no other school in this area like Langwood High School. And I'm so fortunate to get this opportunity and be able to work with teachers and kids in this community and just make this, you know, just that much better than it already is. So, thank you guys very much.
Thank you. You have an outstanding staff to work with and live up for. You're getting started, I know you're gonna get it out a lot, particularly getting started over the summer.
I'm ready to go now.
Welcome.
Alright then. Make it official. I need a motion then to-
We couldn't clap for your spouse.
I need a motion to approve the employment of the new high school principal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Betsy please.
Seren.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Yuravich.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Duryraj.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
And Kopp.
Yes. Doug, welcome. Congrats. Dusty, 7-1, update on the school boards. We got a little old business we need to wrap up here.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and letting me come back and update you on the scoreboards. The goal tonight is to recommend to you on behalf of the administration that we proceed with the scoreboard project, both the Greenberg High School football field and soccer and track complexes. The first thing I wanted to do was to show you a couple of the concept art images that we have for the boards. I know some of this stuff has been passed around, but I wanted to go ahead and present this evening as well. The first image you see up here is the video board that will be going up in the southwest corner of the football complex by the berm. The video screen itself is approximately 13 and a half feet wide by a little over 24 feet wide. You also notice on the side, we have static advertising panels. We have decorative chus across the top of the net. The black box on the top is the sound system, the new sound system that goes with the scoreboard. The sound system does sync to the video and animations on the board. And I think that's something that is important as we look at our needs for sound, that the whole system works together. Before I show you the other concept art, I wanted to show you a brief clip of some of the capabilities that our video boys will be able to do. So if you afford me just a couple minutes here.
No, I didn't make that purchase.
And we don't need to see the actual live commercial. Needless to say, there are a lot of things that we can do with the boards and a lot of ways that we can impact a lot of students and a lot of groups with those boards. As you noticed, some of the features on those boards were geared towards sponsorship. And we've talked before when I presented to the board about the role sponsorship plays. And one of the unique things that we had the opportunity to do by putting the large scoreboard by the berm is that we could provide sponsorship at both the front and the back of the scoreboard. By doing that, we added more return on investment to our advertising sponsors and we were able to charge a more premium price because of those signs that we put along the back. We worked with the Village of Chatham to gain approval in order to do this. And this is a hu- has a huge impact with our sponsors and consequently is one of the things that has allowed us to fuel this project. At the north end of the football field where our larger of the two boards currently resides, it will be replaced by this more traditional football scoreboard. One of the things that we hear a lot, I hear it time and time again, is that the current board where it's at, the way the light hits it, and if you've ever been there in the late afternoon at a game, it's very hard to see the lights. So with the upgrade to this board, the new digital numbers should greatly improve the visibility on that board. Then we also have the soccer and the track and field scoreboard. Now, this is one scoreboard, but it's two different images of the same board. And by having the digital board, it gives us a lot of flexibility. I can tell you as a former track coach and track athlete that having the capability that this board has in order to sync to our timing system and show lane results, that really enhances the whole atmosphere of a track meeting. And it brings a lot to the table for the athletes participating, for the coaches, and for the spectators. And every year, we host two major track events. We host the Titan Coit Invitational and we also host the Capillary Classic Honorable Meet. In addition to that, oftentimes, we host the Central State Eight Conference meets, both the boys and girls. Even when we are not the host school, other schools use our facilities to host because of our facilities. And so this is a key feature that we think will really greatly improve that whole experience to all involved. This is just another view of where it will go on our current location. One thing that I'm very excited about is student involvement. When we started discussing this process, we wanted to make sure there'd be an impact for many students, not just a football scoreboard that would impact football. We wanted to impact band, we wanted to impact cheerleading, dance, soccer, track. We wanted as many students as we could to be involved. And one group that I'm really excited about is a group that may or may not be athletes at all. Just a group that's interested in the behind the scenes things that go into the pre-game production and the game day operations of this scoreboard. So I had an opportunity recently to go into a few classrooms and visit with some students on what these opportunities may look like. And I had 15 students right away that said, "Yeah, we're interested," signed up. I told them about some of the commitments they'd be making, that we would take some time with me this summer to go through some of this, some of the ideas, and they were onboard. And I look forward to working with that group of students and any other students that are interested. Some of the things that we talked about doing with this group, creating digital graphics, digital content such as starting lineups, senior day presentations, upcoming events, special announcements. One of our advertisers has asked that if this group is interested, to get them involved in actually creating a 30-second commercial for the sponsor, which I think is a great idea. So, like I said, there are a lot of opportunities and we really want to utilize these boards to the greatest extent, to really have an impact with the kids. But obviously, we need to talk about numbers. And we need to talk about the cost of the board and where we're at as far as raising money for the board. These are the current numbers as of today. Daktronics' bid was the winning bid, it was $392,756. Currently, our level of sponsorships are $344,200 with a cost remaining of just over $48,000. When I spoke with you in November, I had a very audacious goal of coming in and not only raising enough to cover the cost of the board, but to exceed the cost of the board. But we've learned a couple things since then. One thing that I learned through this process and docking to many, many companies, and we've reached out to over 75 different companies and there are many more companies we'll continue to contact and work on and develop relationships and sponsorships with, is that our initial price point for our MVP sponsorship level was too high. And so we had to make adjustments to that price point. And we did so, and more sponsors came onboard when we did that. Excuse me. Also, at that time, we believed that financing over five years was the best way to purchase the board. We now understand that with the O&amp;M Fund, that we have the ability to use upfront payment in order to eliminate the finance charge. With the latest financing numbers that we received from Daktronics, and I meant to introduce them at the beginning, but Brian and Megan from Daktronics are here to help answer any questions that you have. So, thank you guys for coming, I appreciate it. By doing this, we're saving over $44,000 in finance charges because interest rates have continued to grow. We still plan to pay for the boards with 100% sponsorship. We still plan to do that over five years. I don't plan to stop going after the sponsors and seeking more partnerships and continue to work with businesses. However, this method does afford us an opportunity that if it takes a little longer than five years for us to pay back, we have that opportunity to do that. And again, our goal is to continue to work to pay it back over five years. But if we had to pay it back over five and a half or six years by renewing some of those contracts, we have that opportunity to do so. To date, we've raised over 88%, or approximately, 88% of the cost of the new scoreboards and sound. Our sound system needs to be replaced now. For those of you who've been at soccer games this spring, you know that our sound system is shot. We actually took an external amp and hooked it up and carried speakers out of the press box every night because our sound system is no longer functioning for soccer stadium. So those need to be replaced. If you look at, if you break down the bids, and both Daktronics and Nevco, when they submitted their bids, broke out the cost of each area of the project. These were the bids without installation for sound and just for the two areas, football and soccer track. So as you can see, just sound alone, if we were going out today just to replace our current sound systems, is expensive.
Dusty?
Yes.
Before we move on, is the $54,000 part of the $392,000?
It is part of it.
Oh, yes.
It is part of it. So I pulled that out. But yes, the sound is included in the bid, absolutely. Yes. Great question. Once the boards are paid off, what really excites me about this project in addition to getting kids involved is the fact that it becomes an opportunity for us to generate revenue. Because we don't stop once the boards are paid off. We continue to nurture those relationships with our businesses, continue to have sponsorships, and we continue to plan for the future. And by turning this into a stream of revenue, we now have the opportunity to take something that once was going to cost us a lot of money by replacing our current boards and current sound system, to now an opportunity to pay for those and to start to collect revenue for possible future projects and needs.
Dusty, just so I'm clear, that current sponsorship, that 344K, that's over five years?
It's over five years with the one exception. I have one company that committed to eight years. So there's 18,000 of that is stretched out over eight.
So obviously, no one can predict the future, but if you were just to duplicate this again after it was paid off in five years, potentially over the course of the next five years after that, that would be new revenue of over 300,000.
Yes, it would be.
How much of that new outlay, after you recover the costs, are going to be pushed towards replacing that board?
Say that a little louder.
So, the amount of money that you're going to get after the initial upfront payments and the board's paid for the revenue you start generating, how much money is going to be outlaid for the future replacement of the next board? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, exactly. That's a great question. And personally, I'm a packer when it comes to finances. And so we put away more than what we expect to spend in that regard.
But there will be a plan to do that.
But yes, there will be a plan, yeah. One other thing that I think should be mentioned at this point, I've been meeting with boosters, athletic boosters a lot lately. And athletic boosters have a plan to do a new fundraiser in the fall. They want to call it their Booster Bash, it's kind of a kickstart to the new fall season. And they've committed towards the proceeds of those, of that fundraiser, putting it towards the scoreboard as needed.
Can I piggyback on Greg's question?
Yeah.
If it takes us five years plus one company, three additional years to not even come up with enough to pay for it, in the additional five years that we're talking about making extra revenue on it, we don't have enough money to buy the next one because it's going to be more expensive than the first one was. So how are we saving more money than we're going to spend on it? I think the life cycle of this, what is the life cycle?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Roughly 12 to 15 years. So basically, your second, the second $350,000, you know, between year six and 10, you won't be spending that on the board. You know, once you do on that year 10 to 15, that's typically where you would spend the money to plan on replacing the board.
You're the Daktronics guy?
Yes.
What have you seen as the kind of the cost over time? I mean, how much should we expect to pay for our next board? Do you have any idea?
If it keeps going the way it is, probably about $200,000.
So it's going down?
Down, 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 down.
Kind of TV.
We wouldn't be replacing the whole board.
Just the guts of it.
Right.
Frame and all that stuff would be-
Right, yeah. A big part of the $392,000 is there's upwards of 75 or 100,000 of that is for the structure and electrical and stuff that's going to be there for a future board.
So since we're on the topic, how about somebody hit on it? Operating expense. So, seven, eight years from now, what do we need, a computer upgrade or something?
Yeah, yeah, typically, I mean, part of the bid was it's got five years parts on labor built into it. So on year six, when you renewed your sponsorship, I would assume you would probably purchase another five-year maintenance contract at that time. And then part of that, about half of the, we recommend that you upgrade the computers, like you said, on the front end at the half-life. So most of those, as I said, six or seven years, you would replace the computers in the press box so that, you know, and then that's going to get you to that 12, 14 years.
Does that maintenance contract in that total bid?
Yes.
And how much is that?
The first five years is built into that.
How much is it broken out?
It's around $50,000. So, but that's built into that numbers.
Can I ask you a question, Dusty? So I think it's great that you want to get the students involved. I think that's a really cool thing. Do we have cameras and equipment that we're going to need to be able to produce that stuff, the editing?
We're going to be able to do a lot of it. We're not going to be doing the live replays during the games at the time being. We're not to that yet. And quite honestly, there's enough to do right now that we don't want to do it all at once.
But do we have a lot of equipment where we can-
The equipment we have is from the old media stuff that we-
So we still have some of that stuff?
But it's antiquated. I don't, I can't sit here and tell you that that equipment's going to go work with this when we're ready to get to that stage.
Just something to think of.
Well, so I mean, the scoreboard, there's a lot of capability there, but it's a big TV screen. So everything that you can do with it is going to be in the hardware and software that we have to get in order to allow the students to do that. So that's going to be additional.
A lot of that, the video clips that you showed where they're clipping, that's typically your coaches are already recording, you know, recording the game. You know, and it's just taking the students to take the three hours of game footage and clip a little piece of it together.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm asking, do we have the editing?
We have that, yeah.
But live in-game, you wouldn't have instant replay or-
That's not their plans right now. It's capable, it's capable of it, they just, yeah, so.
So could I just ask one quick question? And that is, for the first five years, the maintenance contract worth about $50,000 is incorporated into that cost. The second five years, your recommendation is to buy the contracts for about $10,000 a year or so. But now, so let's say at year six, upgrading the computer, and you mentioned 200,000. When would, how much would upgrading the computer be? That 200,000 that you referenced?
No.
No, okay.
No, no.
Why?
Today, it's about $15,000 to update the computer system. We're just, we're doing it at, a lot of the schools in the state that have our boards that are six or seven years old are replacing them right now.
Okay.
Oh, 200,000 dollars, what I understand is completely changing the entire board system, right?
Right, yeah, yeah. Like I said, the technology is changing so fast that anything that we put in 10 years ago, it's, you know, lights. Yeah, night and day difference to what we're putting in today. And the cost is coming way down. Are our old boards worth anything?
No.
I don't know.
Can we do a fundraiser for, we're getting off topic. So you don't take the old boards back?
No, they're worth about $50 an alum. Are they Daktronics' boards then? No. They're light bulbs.
Yeah, yeah. So this is what we have left in sponsorships available. We do have one MVP spot left at $9,500 a year with a five-year commitment. We do have one elite spot left, $5,000 a year with a five-year commitment. We do have one elite spot left, five thousand dollars a year with a five-year commitment. And we have digital spots that we're pursuing now. I do have companies that I am talking to that haven't made a decision yet, quite honestly, and we're more that we're reaching out to all the time. At all levels, to be honest.
Do we want to auction them off right now?
If anybody's willing.
We got a big crowd here.
Yeah, I know. New principal, he's got off on a good start.
Maybe chatting fire.
So our recommendation is to proceed with full approval of the scoreboard project for Daktronics. The reasons we say this are, as it freezes, hold on. We do think it's financially responsible. I think it's financially responsible because we have an opportunity to go out and get a great, great pieces of equipment. It's a, an opportunity to do that, we've raised approximately eighty-eight percent of the project budget already and continue to pursue the rest of it. We have an opportunity to do that with replacing the sound as part of this expense, whereas otherwise, we have to replace the sound anyway. And we have an opportunity to do that, whereas the current scoreboards are becoming obsolete and we're quickly approaching that day when we have to replace them as well. And I would much rather do that as part of this project where we can do something that's really special, that's something that sets us apart from the crowd and something that presents additional opportunities for a lot of students, than to replace with similar products what we currently have now in a situation where maybe it is in the middle of a Friday night football game and the board goes out, and now what do we do? So rather than being reactive, I think we'll be proactive in this situation. I think that gives us an opportunity to do something special. And I think this is, quite honestly, I think in addition to the financial responsibility, the enhancing the experiences of students, but I also think that's what this community expects. They expect excellence, and I think this is another example.
The scoreboards, I know, I know this is a project that we need to do. Are we up against an installation deadline or something?
When will it be up and running?
Or when do you want it up and running?
We want it up and running before the start of fall sports. In order to do that, we would need to approve it tonight.
So in order to make it by the fall, our May meeting is the only time it could be approved? Because the only thing I'm struggling with is when we talked about pursuing this project, we made a commitment that we wouldn't move forward unless it was a hundred percent funded.
Yeah.
And it's not a hundred percent funded.
Right.
And so I'm just struggling with my own.
And I will tell you, I was reading an article recently, and the article was talking about Elon Musk. And one of the things that he was quoted in saying in that article is that perfect is the enemy of good. And it took me back a little bit because I'm a bit of a perfectionist at times and I don't like being complacent. I don't like hearing others talk about being complacent. And when I hear good instead of perfect, I hear complacency. But the point of what he was saying was that with every new thing that we do, sometimes in the pursuit of perfection, we miss out on the opportunities to continue progressing forward because of all the good we're doing. I think where we've gotten to with this project is really, really good. And I think if we don't pursue this now, we're going to miss the opportunity to do anything like this a year or two years down the road.
Are you guys, you guys stopping selling scoreboards?
No.
I mean, I'm not trying.
No, I'm more worried about the sponsorship.
The more the sponsorship.
Dusty, and also suppose we are not doing this project now, anyhow, we have to upgrade the speaker system for the football.
Yeah, I'm going to have to go ahead and.
How much it will cost?
Just the speakers?
No, whatever you want to upgrade above the speakers.
Yeah, the speakers alone, we're looking at, I mean, according to that bid, it was fifty-four, I think, was the lower of the two bids.
So if suppose we are not going with this project, we have to spend that fifty-five thousand dollar money from our pocket, right?
Yes.
So that's what the difference is there.
You're going to spend forty-eight thousand regardless for more.
Yeah.
But you're still going to raise that money, we're just going to have to reimburse.
If the speakers alone, yes, I'm going to raise this money, yes.
The commitment hasn't changed, it's just your timeframe is taking a little longer.
And we've found very often that if you leave one spot blank, it's sold on the first game. You know, people see what you're doing out there, and that's if Dusty can.
No, I get it. And the likelihood is we'll be fine. My point is that when I made my decision to say go forward with the project, it was when we were operating under the basis that it would, you know, if it wasn't funded, it wasn't going forward. Until for me to cave, not cave, but bend a little bit is going against what I committed to.
And I think, Brandon, I mean, that is a good point.
It is.
And quite frankly, we discussed that, like, we truly did. You know, this is kind of unique in the, it is unique, not kind of. It is unique in the sense that this is not going to be at any expense to the taxpayer. You know, that's, I think that is probably what going to be the commitment that's greatest is that these sponsorships are going to be paying for that. You know, I often say that my educationally enthusiastic approach on things sometimes overshoots the burn. But to the point of taking advantage of this, particularly now that the sponsors are in place, I think is what makes it different.
So expanding on that, just a couple of clarifiers. And our job's to see what's coming. So how long do you think before we would have the ability to do productions with these students? Because that's part of your pitch. But if we're not able today, is it a year, is it three, five, ten? What gut feeling?
No, I believe that we could do productions this fall. I don't think we're going to do live instant replay this fall by any stretch of the imagination. But I think we're going to do a lot of what you saw there this fall.
You're going to involve fifteen students right off the bat.
But we've got, so we have staff that are able to do this?
Me. I mean, I'm the one meeting with them right now. I mean, that's just part of my duties.
Can our friends over there at WSCC help us out with some of this stuff?
Well, I do, I do have one network station that is interested in being involved and looking at creative ways to be involved in. We're trying to set up a meeting with them in the next week or so.
Yeah, because they'd have the equipment, it'd be a good experience for them.
So that, I've been going back and forth with them on talking about a few things, and that's certainly something we're going to discuss.
And I will tell you, based on experience, you can have those rough and running by the balls. The kids can, the editing software is not that expensive, and you can run it fairly quickly, and the kids know how to do that stuff in the most part anyways.
Did you guys have a board like this?
I run the board that's currently in the Lampier gym.
Okay.
And I do all the graphics and things.
So you've got some experience there.
Yes, sir.
I like it.
Just to be clear, there's no, like, we have a contract where somebody bought a sign for us, and then we're paying extra for their products for twenty-five years. So we basically bought the sign ourselves. There's nothing hidden here that, nope. Okay. And then another concern, Bill kind of ran here at the side, was do we risk, I'm going to try to clarify, or do you want to ask? HSHS is on here, but Memorial isn't, for instance, and those are kind of too big players. Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, and I'm sure that we've reached out to Memorial as well as Springfield Clinic.
It's all, there was some written communication from Dr. Wood.
Nobody walked away mad or anything?
No, in fact, because of our relationship with Springfield Clinic, I met with them before we started selling the advertisements to discuss our relationship with them and our athletic trainer first and foremost.
And do we dare, they're giving us a lot of stuff. Do we dare find a place on here?
We have separate places for Springfield Clinic that are not specifically on the board, but they are present in the complexes, and that we will make sure very well seen.
Are you aware of any other schools, the CSA that's doing a project similar to this?
Well, SHG has a board.
Well, I knew that.
Taylorville is doing a board.
It's already.
But I'm just thinking of the shrinking pool. You know, the more of these that go up, the less reference.
You're exactly right. The more they go up, the less opportunity to capture those businesses.
So we're kind of on the frontline.
Yeah, because I don't, I would hate to, three years from now, be in the tail end of that where Rochester and Springfield High have done those things and that they were trying to fight for the same advertising.
Yeah, I would think with Rochester, that would be a big one. A direct competitor for the market we're trying to get.
Dusty, does that price include installation?
Yes.
We keep telling them different.
I have one question to ask you. Is the, are you somehow limited in the number of digital ads? Why, I have a schedule.
Well, the reason we limited the number of digital ads is because we wanted to provide value to our larger sponsors. And so we capped it in order to do that.
Okay. So do the sponsors also get some digital?
Yes, they do.
Verbiage is part of this?
There's actually, and I sent Dr. Wood a whole layout of the packages, and I'd be happy to share that with you as well.
No, I, no.
Anybody else got any questions for Dusty or Daktronics? This is your opportunity.
Thank you for your time.
Well, Dusty, I would like to say this is a very good, thorough, well-prepared, organized presentation. And I know probably you spent lots of time doing it, and, you know, I took lots of notes. So I commend you on your presentation, thinking about options, et cetera.
Thank you. I appreciate you all for your time.
Thanks, Dusty. All right, so we got an action item here, is that right, Betsy?
Yep.
It's a recommendation of the administration to proceed using Daktronics for the replacement of the scoreboards and the sound system at the high school football soccer track complex based upon the period as approved. So I have a motion to approve.
I'll move that motion.
So I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Brewer?
Yes.
Yuri Raj?
Yes.
Maddox?
This is just based on the fact of what I agreed to before, but I'm voting no.
Siren?
Yes.
Worley?
I'm voting no for the same reason.
And you, Rayvich?
Yes.
And then Kopp?
Yes. Dusty, thanks.
Thank you.
Daktronics, we look forward to working with you guys. Your name is Megan and your name's?
Brian.
Brian. You guys are welcome to stick around for the rest of the night. Moving on to new business, we have a fee, no, we tabled that one down. Student handbook changes for the eighteen, nineteen school year. Who gets to do that?
Good evening.
A majority, I want to speak for a majority of the assistant principals on this, so please feel free to hop in at any time, but a majority of the language changes that were done were no changes to disciplinary codes in any of the handbooks. And a majority of the handbooks, there were some food service language updates and also some language in regards to the mission statements and also the, you want to say?
Strategic planning.
Yeah, strategic planning. And from here, I'm just going to kind of go over the high schools. For example, just going to show you from here, we have three language changes that the school handbook committee, the GHS handbook committee made with regards to a new statement, for example, an article prohibited, packaged food and drinks with a clear container and a resealable lid are allowed in the classroom with teacher permission. We're basically adding in a clear container with a resealable lid. And the final exam policy, that was a new statement, final exams shall take place over three days instead of four. That was an administrative decision, but now we're making that update in the handbook. The school dress code entirely is following the model student handbook from the Illinois Principals Association. As from last year to this year, there's a few language items within it, but enough more than four examples such as including accessories or things like that. All of the rest of the language that permeates the Goma High School handbook and a lot of the other handbooks are model student handbook updates from the Illinois Principals Association. But no changes were made to any handbook in regards to the disciplinary code.
I have a couple observations slash comments slash questions. I noticed that the high school didn't make any references to all the food service things. Was there a reason why GIS, GMS, and the elementary schools did?
I believe there's differences in the fees in regards to different statements, the different handbooks. That language wasn't included, but it can be easily referenced.
Well, you know, negative balances is relevant to the high school.
Sure.
So, I mean, I do think that what's important, I know what you're saying, that the actual, you know, different federal programs, Chad, you can help me out, don't apply to the high school. But there are certainly some aspects of the food service program that currently are not in the handbook revisions that do apply, like you don't care, you know, ten-dollar negative balance or something like that. The second thing is, over the last couple months, there, and I, there was some discussion about, from the tech department, Josh, are you around?
Yeah.
About incorporating into, well, basically not having the district solely responsible and paying for damage to Chromebooks, et cetera, broken keys, et cetera. And that would be a new, it's Josh's volume is over still, and probably the registration keys, et cetera, schedule probably would be on the board agenda next month. But if that is the case, then we do need to have what Josh's intent is in the policy handbook, along with any fee structure that he is recommending, or fee charges that he is recommending. Because we have five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars worth of new Chromebooks coming online. So we need to make sure that we're taking care of our assets. And one way, unfortunately, that parents and children will understand the great need is to have them help us make these repair costs.
Absolutely. Just, I was in a conversation with Mr. Mulvaney earlier this morning in regards to bringing on Chromebooks in such a large capacity, language and notice and fees thereof. Our plan in regards to, for example, some of the more similar changes to food service and things like that, we use the class meetings to rotate through the beginning of the year to put all the students and parents on notice and communication therein. Speaking of the Chromebooks themselves and to the procedures and the fees and other things and the languages, those are all being discussed and definitely will go into consideration to making firm notice to the community and the students.
Okay, so are you or are you not thinking, I mean, where, if these, the changes in charges for Chromebooks, if it's not in the student handbook, where would you put it?
I think at that point, we would definitely consider, what is the language that we want? And what is the language we want to pursue?
Okay.
And we would recommend an administrative change to the handbook.
Okay. Well, I think, yeah, Josh?
Even if, probably would be to pull it out of the handbook, especially in this first couple of years, to make sure it gets highlighted individually on our registration and like our AUP. So like right now, there's technically some verbiage in there on following AUP, but it's buried in the handbook. I'd almost like to see it registration this year as a step in itself. Here's the Chromebook.
That's great.
Policy and repair, right there. It wasn't, hey, you signed off on the handbook, which this was written in, and it's a separate step, so that way we got it right there.
Okay. Well, I do think we need to make it front and center. It's got to be official.
Absolutely. That's, you're paraphrasing conversation with Mr. Mulvaney I had this morning.
Okay.
So are you, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, so you're saying there's going to be a separate affidavit that they sign off on about the damages when they get the Chromebook issued, or is that going to be a registration tag when the parents sign off?
I would put it as a separate, like, we'll go through registration, it's on Skyward right now, it's like step one, verify your student information, step two, such and such, step three, Chromebook policy.
So I can accept them in these documents?
I have a couple of questions. Can we typically do policies? It shows us last years and then it crosses out any language and it puts in a new language. Am I reading this correctly that everything you have here is additional language, or like how do we know what's been changed?
If you're looking through if the high schools changed themselves, I said new statement, new statement is a new statement recommended for the model student handbook. If it's under the top portion, which are the top three policies, those are going to be language items, those have changed in regards to maybe their order and also the implementation of some of the model student handbook language. But if you're following through, you'll see there's the new statement or a new section or a reorganized section. or a reorganized section. That'll basically show you exactly what those changes are there.
So, I'm going to challenge you just a little bit. And last year, we had, it's hard to follow, and we, we thought it would be fine, and then we had this big blow up on social media about leggings or something.
Sure.
So, I'm just asking, is there a way that you, for next year?
Sure.
Present it the way policies are where, hey, line through the ones we're getting rid of, italicize what we're adding. I know rearranging might be, I don't know how to.
Sure.
Tell you to do it, but just, it's just easier for us to see.
A highlighted section.
So, we know what's been taken out, what's been added.
Strikeout, you know, you take your.
Sure, no problem at all.
It's more logical to go, oh, yeah, that makes sense, and we can move on.
No problem.
Anything else?
Well, Dale, we appreciate your work on this. It's not, you know, it's what we rely on too as a board.
Sure.
As well as you.
Well, appreciate all you're going to put as well. Thank you.
Any questions for Dale? Other than that, none, I need a motion to approve the changes for 1819 school year is presented. Second? Betsy, please.
Worley? Yes, you, Rayvitch?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Dury Raj?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Yes. Eight, three, graduation procedures. Dr. Tate, when you're up.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to formally invite you all to attend the June 2nd graduation ceremony. It begins at eight o'clock. Seven thirty would be a nice arrival time. We will have dedicated seating for you all. If you want the stage, we can put you on the stage, whatever you would like. But it's at the Bank of Springfield Center. It's a new, same place, same venue, new name, but we're looking forward to it. It's going to be an outstanding evening.
I'm coming.
Thank you all so much.
Are we still allowed to hand out the palmas?
If you so choose, you may.
I have one in particular I might want to hand out.
Just give me a.
Can we vote on that?
Give it to me, so that way I know.
That's practice.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Do you need to know how many are coming?
I, I'll be there.
We're just going to.
Well, I tell you what, if you guys.
We'll have seating for everybody.
We'll email you.
Email me and I'll send out.
Okay, perfect.
Got it. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Ross. Eight, four, upgrade the security of the east entrance at G H S. Mike?
Sir.
This one yours?
We would not forbid to upgrade the security entrance at Goma High School. We actually had, during the pre-bid meeting, we had like five vendors show up. Bid day, we had two vendors show up. John Coe Construction out of Mackinac, Illinois was the, was the apparent low bidder, $51,000. That's just the base bid itself, and then the whole project cost, architectural fees and everything is $62,665. We're seeking approval to go ahead with this project. It should start, we're anticipating right after Memorial Day with a completion date of around August 13th. The contractor, the apparent low bidder is the same contractor that did Chatham Elementary School. Yep, right, last year, same contractor.
Same contractor who did?
Chatham Elementary.
Oh, perfect. Oh, great.
So moved.
Second.
Betsy, please.
Yes, you, Rayvitch?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Dury Raj?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Yes. Mike, thank you. Approval for leasing options for 3,000 Chromebooks. Josh, is this one yours?
Yep. So, we put the R F P out for both the Chromebooks and to be able to lease the Chromebooks. My recommendation is to award the purchase of the actual product to Two Trees, and we'll go with the H P for the total up there.
Can't see that well.
There we go. Scroll back up, Betsy. It is obviously the lowest bid, $583,500, and that includes our Chrome management piece that we need to enroll our Chromebooks and manage them here in-house. That was the lowest bid we got for the actual machine itself. So, how that would work, we also put the R F P out to, hey, we need to, we're going to want to purchase this equipment, we want to lease the equipment through a leasing company. And that, we came back with American Capital, which is actually, if we do their F M V or fair market value lease, is less than 0%. So, how that works is, talk to Charlotte, how they're going to do this, and I had to give them an example. We didn't know what the product was at first or the exact number because we were waiting on the Chromebook R F Ps, but I gave them an example of one. So, if we purchased Chromebooks for $610,000, $610,500, they would lease that equipment to us for three years on a payment of $189,651.83. That comes to roughly, comes to exactly $568,955, or not, $55.49, which is $41,544.51 less than total cost of the equipment. At the end of three years, we say, here's the Chromebooks back. They're yours, we don't want them. They're in all reality, so if you took that $41,000 and divided it by 3,000, which is the number of Chromebooks we'd buy, it's roughly $13.85. So, they're gambling on, we'll take these back from all Chatham, and we can at least sell them for $13.85.
Would we ever consider the residual value and take possession of them?
So, when we got this bid and it, seeing that it came up as less, I called and I said, you talked to me about this. He said, yeah, that's how it works. He said, now, if it comes, push comes to shove, and you, at the end of your lease, we can actually make it to where if you want to keep 1,000 of them, you can do that. If you want to keep 1,000 of them and sell them to your teachers or community members, you can. We can, we can work at that at the end of the lease.
But that rate is different then, right? The buyout rate is?
No, so, he said, so, our, my initial thought is go the entire less than 0%.
Right.
Okay, but he said at the end of that, if you do choose that, he said, we can work at the end of it if you choose to keep some at the end. Then if we choose to keep 1,000, we'd have to come to agreement as these are worth $13.85, we'll give you that and we'll keep them. You know what I'm saying?
So, but why do you have that percentage?
So, at the end of our lease, we'll have to look at fair market value, and they'll give us the option of, hey, you can buy these back then at fair market value if you want to keep them.
The buyout percent is not the buyback percent. The buyout is.
The buyout is in, hey, you're keeping them. These are your machines, you're keeping them.
And we probably would never do that.
I would say, we just get on a three-year lease. Every three years, we're bringing in X amount, getting rid of X amount.
So, I think I misheard you. You're suggesting we should do the lease, not buying.
Yes, the fair market lease, yes. Mm-hmm. Yep. And this protects us too in all reality. At the end of, at three years, I mean, even with the scoreboards, they're talking with the technology, we don't know what it's going to be, we don't know what the technology's going to be here either, then, three years. This doesn't lock us into anything. Three years, if they got something new, then we'll lease those.
The beauty of this is if you've got it budgeted and we know it's a recurring deal, we've got to do hard every three years.
And that's all it is. We have told you from day one, all we're doing is taking the money that we had set aside for our capital, government finance, purchase, and just using it for tech. So, we're not asking for any new money, we're just saying, hey, this is how we're going to spend that money from now on.
And the nice thing is tech's trending down in cost as time goes on.
Yep.
How do we, how do we know when we turn those back that there won't be student information going back with them?
If we, if you, if we wanted to fully guarantee it, we could wipe them clean. I mean, there's nothing, that's the beauty too of a Chromebook, they only have like a 30, not even 32 gigs, or I forget the minimum of space that's on them, not even 32 gigs, it's minimal space.
Is it going to be?
That's on there. It's all cloud-based.
It'll be on our cloud or somebody else's?
It'll be on Google's.
Okay.
Which is what they use now.
Yeah, they have a continuity plan and all.
Yeah. So, I mean, we, I mean, if we could, if we wanted to 100% guarantee, we could whitewash them all. I mean, you could do that, but there's nothing, that's the beauty of them, there's nothing on there in all reality. The only thing that's on there is a list of logins.
The RAM, maybe.
Yep. Yeah, and if you, if I log in, it's going to go to the cloud and grab my stuff. If you log in, it's going to cry and grab the stuff, so nothing's stored, really.
Do we pay anything for that cloud space, by the way?
Education will get it for free.
Totally free? Wow.
The reason I'm asking, because I think it ties into the next, again, item, is what if Google started to charge for that, would we have the space in our cloud?
If they, if they pushed, and this is, I mean, this is a fair to all the schools, because Chromebooks has got the, I mean, entire country, in my opinion, in education wrapped up right now. If they came and said, hey, we're going to start charging you guys now, everybody's going to have to go back to the drawing board in all reality. I mean, because then you're going to, what do we do? Do we host the data? Do we go away from Google? Do we go back to Microsoft? I mean, there's no way to plan for that.
I guess what I'm getting at is we were, the servers we're going to replace here in a minute, we were told that the ones we have are massive.
Yeah.
Way oversized. We felt like that was, you know, even though it's in hoops, well, in case we ever need them.
Yeah.
We've got the space. It kind of, it kind of all ties together, I guess.
Yeah. The ones we have now and the ones that we're, I'm going to propose later will hold student data, it just a matter of how much student data are we going to hold. And before.
That's our part.
There was no restrictions on, the kids could load up as much as they want. We wouldn't do that. We wouldn't allow it again. That shouldn't have been in place, so.
One of our issues now is not that we didn't have the right size or massive, it's that it's costing us a significant amount to maintain them.
Yes.
More so than we need to be spending.
Yes. Right now, with our Chromebook fleet that we have, we're maintaining them ourselves and everything's coming out of our pocket. Whereas this too, it'd help us, say, put the policies in place that if a student breaks it, then now we're able to track it and really put those type of costs back on the student. Right now, they're coming out of a cart, and there's nothing that stops a kid from grabbing somebody else's and doing what they want to. And now it's really hard to say, hey, Johnny, what happened to your Chromebook? Well, it was like that when I got it. We can't say if he's telling the truth or not, but if it was his Chromebook that we were issued to him, this was in your possession 4 hours a day.
So, you will allow the students to take their Chromebooks to their home, and so, for example, the day one, first day the kid is coming into the classroom, you give the Chromebook, at the end of the school year, you will collect the Chromebook back?
I think we need to worry about that proper towards the end and really start to think about it. The more we, a lot of schools are, I'm saying, I would almost flip it, majority of the schools, believe it or not, now are saying, keep the device over the summer because we want our kids to be able to access. We pay for a lot of the stuff anyway, the, the online subscriptions that don't get used technically for two months out of the school year unless they're logging on. Now we can say, you have access from A to Z 12 months out of the year.
So, for three years, they can keep till we have the lease?
Yep. Mm-hmm. I would, I mean, we'd collect seniors, but other than that, we can't, I think we need to wait and decide that later. Do we want to collect them? Do we want to issue them out? And really wait, I think we need to poll some districts to see what they do. A lot of the ones up north say, keep them all year long, we don't want to mess with them over the summer. Because again, that's, now we got, are they not, they're not being used. Two, if something happens to them, that we'll have to repair them. I mean, if we're keeping them for three years, the kid's got them, and it's, they're all three years. But I think we need to look at that later, for sure. And this would be, yeah, five minutes left, we're going home. The only other thing, so I, we put out the bid for the Chromebooks, the leasing of the Chromebooks and cases, because I feel like we need to do our part to protect the device when they're, they're carrying them from class to class, in the classroom, going home, buses, we got to take that in consideration. So, we need to do our part. And if you look at the bid sheet, we had everything from $12, I think it was, or maybe 16, all the way up to 28. I don't feel comfortable quite yet. I would like permission to get, get those, and I'll kind of give you an example. Okay, so here, here's a $12 case. Do we want to really spend $12 on something that's a sleeve and does nothing? Or do we pay $25? This is a $25 model, and it's.
Is that a hard shell?
It's a hard shell and the Chromebook. It just stays in it. Twenty. So, there should be no reason why, really, now that this isn't, in my mind, because I also put it out to, hey, what's, what would it cost us to do three years accidental on them? And it was about $48 to $56 a Chromebook, which came to $127 on low level. That's a lot of Chromebooks we could buy. You know, is it worth it? Are we going to have $128,000 in repair? No. I'd rather spend a little bit of extra money and get a better case and say, we'll go with that. So, what I'd like to do is get permission to give Two Trees, go with the H P Chromebook, tell Two Trees we're going to make that purchase. What will happen is we'll get the bill from Two Trees, award then the lease to American Capital, and say, American Capital will fill out the paperwork, here's our bill, they'll take care of our bill at that point. And then I'd like permission to, from you guys, I don't really want to have to come back next month to hold this up or get a special board meeting just to approve cases. If you say, if I could have, hey, from 25 to 15, we're, we want you to make your best recommendation and go with it on a case.
Were those bid out, those prices?
Yeah, all of it was bid out.
So, we can do that tonight?
What's that?
Is that what you're asking, the cases?
I would like, on the cases, the permission just to go back and collect the samples of all the ones that we received bids on, and then we can say, we need to go with this one. Because like I said, this is an example, and if we take lowest bid, this is what we're getting. And it's not good. So, I would not recommend that.
Well, you can let Dr. Wood know.
Yeah, that's all I wanted.
Your recommendation is he'll keep it.
I just didn't want to have to come back and take another board, you know, meeting to, for you guys, hey, this is what we came up with. If I could work with Dr. Wood, if you guys give me the permission to make that purchase.
Josh knows his stuff, and so, he's done a lot of research and had the right pressure.
We can do that in like a not to exceed thing, right?
That's all I wanted. And the only reason I did that, I put not to exceed 28, because that was all, I took my top bid, and it was $28, or I think it was 27. So, I really love this one, and it came in at 25. I'd like to go with that one, really, but.
How long, what's the turnaround time in those cases, you think? That's pretty quick, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm. I mean, so we'd have to, I want to put that order in in June, make sure we, for 3,000, we get them.
Yeah.
sure we, for 3,000, we get them. I mean, 3,000's a lot. So, because the, I don't, I don't fear that turnaround as much as, we're gonna have to unbox 3,000 of these, we're gonna have to pack 3,000 Chromebooks in these, and barcode 3,000. So that's my bigger thing.
Listen, you just, well, Hi, that's the next meeting.
Anybody, we're taking volunteers tonight. Anybody that walked through the doors, that was a stipulation.
Any hands we can clap.
All right. Any other questions for Josh, other than that?
I'll make that motion.
For the Chromebooks?
Yes.
We're doing these in, you're doing this all together here, or just the...
So I'd like to, yeah, this is...
Eight-five's the Chromebooks, right?
Yes, that's the only, we're, the only thing on eight, or eight-four.
Eight-four is the Chromebooks.
Yeah, the only thing we're doing on eight-four is approving the purchase, we're giving Two Trees the equipment, we're giving American Capital the lease, and you're just giving me permission to make a call on the case.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Bortley, yes, Yuravich.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Duryraj.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Sarin.
Yes.
And Cup.
Yes. All right, now you want to do it?
Another one, this one is, will be purchase of 80 refurbished desktops from GHS, teacher machines, that we want to give, make sure they're on our rotation next, so we'll give all the teachers at GHS a new desktop machine.
Are these in classrooms, Josh?
This, yep, this is strictly just teachers' workstations. The machines they have now are antiquated. I mean, they are struggling. They barely meet the minimum specs for Windows 10 in its due time. This, again, was just me doing, coming to you guys for my part. The money's in my budget for the desktop rotation. I just want to, it exceeded the 20, it's $20,880. That's, I want to give that to CompuCycle, which was the lowest bid on that one.
Is that just the box, or is that box monitor?
That's just the box. We have monitors. We, I mean, we need to buy some occasionally, but I just, I really want to get the machines fixed before we go to the monitors.
Well, you do not want to buy a new one for the teachers. Well, you want to go for the refurbished.
Because we had such a biggest problem district-wide. I'd want to get a rotation going, and then we can focus on newer ones. And these are, I mean, they're still, the specs that they have on them are...
I know, refurbished are still a really good one, but I would like to go for the new one instead of the refurbished.
The, I mean, and it's just more cost savings. I'd like to, I feel comfortable with the refurbished desktops. We bought refurbished desktops on all the other buildings and have pretty good luck with them.
What processor is it?
It's an I5, 3.2 gig. On these ones, we did 8GB of RAM, and we also put 240 solid state drives in them.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so they should, yeah.
So moved.
Doctor Sackler.
Second.
Betsy, please.
Yuravich.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Duryraj.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Sarin.
Yes.
Bortley.
Yes.
Josh, again?
Yep. This one, okay, this is the server one that we were talking about. So two board meetings ago, I came to you and told you about our network storage that I felt like was oversized. And we posted, and I got permission to post an RFP, but Greg actually brought up a good point that night, and he kind of asked, does this do our, our servers as well? And technically, whenever I first thought about looking at this project, I was only worried about storage. And then when I got to thinking about it, it was silly for us to only replace our storage and leave the brains of the servers, so to speak. So with our system, what we have now is, we have two Cisco UCSs, one at GHS, one at GMS. That is the brains of the operations that does all the computing processing for the servers. And then we have our EMCs that provide just the storage for the virtual server. So if you go in the data centers, there is no physical server. It's those boxes, and we create the physical, or virtual machines on those boxes, and then that's how it works. So I thought, well, it's silly to buy a brand-new storage and then have these, the brains of the computers still out here out of warranty, and we're gonna be in a problem with those. So I looked at a hyper-converged solution instead, posted an RFP, and what this will do is replace both those Cisco UCSs and our data, or storage EMCs into one solution. That's the other problem. We have Ciscos for our brains, we have EMC for our storage. We also have Drobo's sitting out there for our storage, and we also have some standalone servers. So managing all this stuff is a headache. And you can imagine, if we have a problem now, we call Cisco, let's say, which we don't have any, our Cisco brains are zero warranty on whatsoever. So if one fails tomorrow, we're, we're in trouble, I'm gonna tell you. But if we say we got a problem, then it's, hey, it's, well, that's on EMC's side. No, that's on Cisco's side. So you battle that. This gives us one solution. The other benefit of this, and like I told you, right now, we didn't renew it yet, depending on what we decide tonight, but our EMC storage is under warranty, and it's costing us roughly $40,000 a year for maintenance only. So, I mean, if you took the $40,000 and broke it up over the five-year, this has five-year maintenance and support built into it. It's paying for itself already. So, so my recommendation would go to Nutanix. This also includes its turnkey. That's why there's a little bit, they're not the lowest, but the CDW one was doing a remote install, and I don't feel comfortable doing a remote install when I can pay a little bit more and have people onsite doing the install with us.
Are you telling us we could pay 200K over the next five years for maintenance, or we can pay 168K to have everything included, including maintenance?
You can buy it brand-new. So we're gonna have, if we vote, if we say, no, this is not a good idea, then tomorrow, I'm gonna go to Charlotte and say, we gotta renew our EMC maintenance agreement, and that's $40,000. So either five years, we're paying for something new, or we're gonna pay for the same thing, on just strictly maintenance and support.
We could get a Sentinel on our topic, but do they still do...
I'm gonna tell you, I battled this one, and I scratched my head a lot on this. And at first, I thought, well, I would, I would feel weird if, let's say, the Nutanix came in at that, and the other two were at the 250. But the fact that it's flip-flop makes me believe that I'm, they bid me something I should, they shouldn't have. And I called, got the specifications. I feel like, maybe, I'm just gonna leave it at that. I won't go into that any further.
Are they still doing consulting for us?
No. Unless there's, comes up like this, where they can bid on something, but there's no other... And again, this, and taking this money is, I've hoarded it, those maintenance agreements, that, and another one that's gonna pay for it's pretty much that anyway. It's in the tech budget. I'm not coming saying, hey, I need more money. I've got the this, and there's another, there's a Citrix renewal that was another 40K. So, in my mind, it's a no-brainer, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
We got a motion. You want a second?
Second.
Thank you. Brandon, got it.
I just put one down on all these over here.
Betsy, please.
Brewer.
Yes.
Duryraj.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Sarin.
Yes.
Bortley.
Yes.
Yuravich.
Yes.
Yes.
One more, Josh? Yep. All right, our last one, again, this was just me doing my due diligence, making sure we got the best price. This won't come out until next year, but I'm getting ready for the summer. This will be for 30 refurbished machines for our audiovisual lab. These are separate, or you're probably thinking, well, we had, we just approved one for 80. This one's for 30. But like I told you when I asked permission, these ones got the I7, faster processor. We updated the RAM in them to 18 gigs, because hopefully, they're gonna be doing video editing for that scoreboard, so. But no, regardless of the scoreboard or not, this lab was, was our audiovisual lab, where they run our Adobe products like Adobe Studio, which is video editing, Adobe Photoshop, which is photo editing. So they need to be a little bit beefier machines.
And you can, you guys can internally upgrade them.
Yeah, and that's, that's the other reason why we go with a lot of the, I'm not scared of the refurbished, because we can, we can upgrade the stuff, you know? I'd rather spend my money elsewhere, and just be more, it's more cost-effective for us. This also gets us all pretty much on HP desktops, which that's, that's another headache. We had so many different machines, so we're in a pretty good spot after this year.
Still moved.
Okay, yeah.
Second. You good?
Any further discussion?
Sorry, Susan.
No, I just have a question.
We can still discuss.
No, no, I have another question back there. Okay, do we need, since we talked about the $584,000, do we need a separate motion for the not to exceed on that case?
He's got it.
He passed that on there.
Okay, so when we were voting on that, in essence, we're talking for both. Okay.
Yes, yes.
That's it.
Betsy, please.
Yes. Duryraj.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Sarin.
Yes.
Bortley.
Yes.
Yuravich.
Yes.
Can I take just two seconds, too? I gotta say, one, thanks for your time, but two, I want to tell Mike Dobbs and Jim Lovelace, I gotta give them a public thank you, because with my RFPs, or sometimes I had several questions, and those guys have been through the process, and I had to hit them up several times. So it was a real, I appreciate the team effort with Mike and Jim on helping me guide through that process. So I just want to make that public, that these guys were great teammates through this, so.
Okay, Brewer's next, Brewer.
Yes, sorry, Gutsy.
That's okay, and Cup.
Yes.
Now you can talk all you want. I just want to make sure you got your votes.
Anything else, Josh?
That's it, I'm done for the night. Thank you.
Spent a lot of money there. Moving on, board meeting dates for the 18, 19 school year. They're all on Thursday.
Yes.
Have I got any questions?
Can you check the curriculum date? It is not on Thursday. I think it is November...
There are two of them that are up there that needed to be switched.
Okay.
Yeah, John has spoken.
So that was...
So you're starting the date changes?
Yeah, starting in June.
Saying this list is incorrect, or...
There, well, there's, well, we have, there's two of them that were, actually said, man, I need the technology. It's out during a special presentation. It's not a board meeting. It's a special presentation.
So the date, this is so...
Accurate.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's two in November, two in March.
Right, two, that's what it was.
I have a motion for...
Oh, so moved, sorry.
Thursday board meetings next year.
Second.
Any further discussion? Betsy, please.
Maddox.
Yep.
Sarin.
Yes.
Bortley.
Yes.
Yuravich.
Gradually, yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Duryraj.
Yes.
And Cup.
Yes. Communications, 9-1, future board meeting dates. End of year staff breakfast, is that Friday?
Yes, Friday.
8:00 AM, GHS. May 31st, ABLink Division meeting, June 12th, Finance Committee, and then June 21st starts our Thursdays.
And has a construction committee determined when it's going to meet, next month?
Typically, the first Wednesday of the 6th.
First Wednesday, Mike?
Okay.
6th.
That is...
If we, if we move those, Mike, just send the board an email, or, I guess we post them anyway, but...
Yeah, posted.
They'll be, they'll continue to be on the first Wednesday.
Okay.
All right.
I have, I'd like to make a comment on Communications, if you're at that point.
We're at 9-2, Communications, where anybody can talk about anything they want to the board.
Okay. I just want to make a couple comments about our art programs here in the district. What I think, I just would like to give you a quick summary. The district sponsored the Celebration of the Arts in April at BIS, and it's always well-attended. And in addition, there was the Regional Scholastic Art Exhibit, which is independent outside of the district. And basically, then, there was another K-12 juried art show at SIU School of Medicine. And basically, the works of art, that was a juried exhibition, and the district had some submissions to that. And then, one other point I'd like to make is that the Capital Art Fair was just this past weekend, and Jenna Williams, who's a district student, her poster was chosen for first-place winner for the Springfield Old Capitol Art Fair. But in addition, Gloria Sue of GHS and Kayla Hearn of GMS were awarded honorable mentions. So what, although this is a brief summary, what I would like everyone to, you know, I'm learning about baseball. I love watching baseball, so I'm hoping that when I talk about some of this, you'll say, oh, yeah, I think I might go to the Celebration of the Arts. And the seniors always voluntarily put some works of art up for auction. I have bought works of art several years, and I love it. So, in any event, that's all I wanted to say. You can get really, very nice art. So...
Very nice artwork in here.
And exactly.
And Kristen did. I wanted to make much, Kristen came in and put up all of her students' artwork, and it's pretty impressive. She's gonna continue to adorn the walls with all the artwork.
You good?
Yep, I am good, thank you.
Anybody got anything they want to bring before the board that is not an agenda item? Everybody good? All right, at this time, I need a motion. We're gonna adjourn from regular session, and we're gonna go back in to close to finish up some items that we didn't finish up. We had employee personnel litigation, contract negotiations. So do I have a motion? You getting a motion? Do you have a second? Brandon, all those in favor? So, good night, everybody. Thanks for your attendance.